I want to call the meeting to order, 7 o'clock. Attendance tonight, we have all three board members here, myself, Kathleen Curtin, Frank Boa, in person, and the rest of the board members are virtual. Mr. Mann expects to be on shortly, he's running a little late, but just let me know, Peter, when he comes on so we can make a note for the board minutes. And with that, if you could please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now moving to our student council reps, so I had the pleasure of being invited to the student council meeting this afternoon and see some of the students who are on part of that, and tonight we have Katie and Ryan, right? I think I saw Ryan. Hi guys, good seeing you again.
Hi. So we just have a quick few updates as always. Like Mr. Buno said, we had a meeting after school today, just to go over a few things for the following months, and we wanted to say thank you to Mr. Simons and Mr. Buno for coming. That was really great to talk about different things about the board and just being able to communicate with the rest of our student council. As for fundraising updates, we have the week of the 8th, we're going to be officially starting our hot chocolate sales, and all proceeds for that are going to be donated to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Then I'll hand it off to Ryan for the rest.
Thank you. Since the Valentine's Day decorating went so well the week before break, today our student council members decided to decorate for St. Patrick's Day as well, so we're looking forward to that. And we're also hoping to send out a Google form soon to student council members to see if there are any questions that the board could help us in answering, as we talked about in our meeting today, and we will stay in contact with the board about that.
Great. That's exactly what we're looking for, is, and then one of the things I mentioned, the student council is how important it was to have the student voice as part of the input for the, to making their experience at the high school the best it can be, and how they're doing a great job to, with their peers, to try to just continue the spirit of the school, you know, decorating the school, doing different activities to make it, you know, a quotes "normal," as normal a school year as possible. So thanks for all your work and the work of the student council and your advisors for that. You're welcome to stick around, like I said before, to enjoy the meeting, and thanks again for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Moving on to the next part of our agenda, we'll have the public forum, and again, just to note, as we have during virtual period, we do have the email link on the board website for folks to email questions or concerns or issues that they want to bring up. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the Eastern Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of districts other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will conduct the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. So it's important in the public email to do that, your name, where you're located, and your affiliation with the district. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protection, it must be stressed that the visitors forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited will be declared out of order. So I will turn to Linda, to see if there's any communications.
There are no public comments at this time.
So those who are tuning in and listening on the live feed, just remember there is a second public forum. As we go through the contents of the meeting and any issues that come up, you're welcome to also email for the second public forum, which will be later this evening. So with that, we will move to the discussion items, and the first topic is the fall II sports would be the second phase of sports coming into this session. So I'll turn over to Mr. Simons.
Yes, we are asking the board this evening to consider approval of the Fall II sports season. Board is aware that the state has classified certain athletic sports activities as higher risk. Some of those higher-risk sports activities occur during the winter, and that season is occurring now, and some of those higher-risk sports occurred typically in the fall, but because those types of sports were not approved during the fall season, we could not operate sports such as football, football cheerleading, volleyball, and we now have the approval from the state to offer those activities under a different schedule, shortened season that will begin in March and end in May. And we also have developed a updated plan for implementing those sports and supervising those sports activities that Mr. Leonard is going to speak about, and then we can have some questions and answer and discussion about it. We also had Dr. Albert, our school physician, look at the plan, he provided feedback, and we incorporated his feedback into the plan. So I'm going to ask Mr. Leonard to speak to this, and then we'll take any questions or concerns that you may have regarding fall sports.
Good evening, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Really, the framework for this whole plan is the same plan we used in the fall and the winter, and we're going to continue to use in Fall II. It's truly the core principles of our, all of our student athletes and coaches and everybody wearing masks, trying to maintain social distance, and then also another real key to this is all of our teams work in small pods, small little groups. So we kind of, you know, if there's a team of 15, we try to break them down to groups of five, or two, or three, spread out in the basketball court. In this example, for Fall II would be volleyball, so say we have 15 to 16 girls on varsity volleyball, those girls, instead of working all together, they would try to break down in small little groups, small little pods. Obviously, when we get to games, they're together. We also, so this way it's easier for contact tracing, and then also with games, similar to what we have going on tonight, we have basketball, and we stagger the benches going back, we'll do the same thing for volleyball. We rotate the volleyballs out in games and practice and clean them. I can't believe the amount of spray disinfectant we're going through. A lot in basketball, we go through about two bottles a game in basketball, but it's working out really well. Same thing with football. I think football, we always have a high number of kids that participate, about 100-plus. They're going to be really creative breaking down those small pods, small groups, in efforts to do that, for example, it might be the defensive lineman and offensive lineman, and wide receivers and defensive backs, so a lot to do special attention to breaking those pods down even more. There might be only 20 kids in the weight room, 20 kids might be watching film, so it's concentration to smaller groups, smaller pods, we call them, that has worked out really well for us. We've had a lot of success in the last two seasons. We're going to continue to use the same core principles every day, we're going to do daily health screening with temperature checks, that has been very positive, it's worked out extremely well. The majority of all the coaches have been involved, and that's been a very positive thing. So I'm very excited, we're going to have opportunities for varsity and JV football, varsity and JV boys and girls volleyball, and varsity and JV cheerleading. And cheerleading, we're almost kind of do exactly what they're doing now and kind of just rolled over to Fall II, and they've done a great job, and it's just utilizing our space, our fields, and spreading kids out. I just, I'm not sure, we've had a lot of success right now in the winter season right now, the kids have been great, everybody's wore their mask. The only incident we've had, it wasn't our team, it was another team where actually I stopped the game and talked to their coach about it, and all those student athletes from the other school put up their mask. So all of our coaches are, do a great job monitoring that, make sure everybody has their mask if they're out on campus, they're socially distanced trying to run, trying to use the campus the best they can. But I'm very, you know, excited about the Fall II season. It's, all these seasons are very small, condensed seasons, pretty intense, we're playing like an NBA schedule, three, four games a week in basketball, but I can tell you, the kids very, very much enjoy it. We just had senior night tonight for cheerleading as well as boys' basketball, and the parents couldn't be any more happier getting their kids involved and grateful that they were able to come here for senior night, so that was very positive. So I'm looking forward to it, and plus, you know, as the season goes on, we'll be outside more with football, we're going to start outside and try to maintain it. They started clearing our turf field, plowing it, and with the sun today, the warm weather, it melted everything, so I'm very excited for that. So I'm not sure if anybody has any questions.
What, Mike, this is, might be no, the, so for the, for football, the, is your sense that there's going to be enough teams to be, have a schedule, competitive schedule?
Yeah, the schedule for both volleyball and football, especially football, we have until March 3rd to do our declaration, Mr. Simons has that, where we'll agree to play varsity and JV, we'll submit that to Section 2. Once that submission is in, the football committee will develop schedules, I'm pretty confident, at least with ours, we'll be probably playing A-level teams, and we'll have enough games. There's some schools that may not play, but we're only talking maybe six games anyway, so we'll at least be able to find those six games. It's not a full season, of course, just all these ten seasons, so I'm pretty confident, I know at least, you know, the A and B, double A schools in our league, everybody plans on playing varsity, JV, and some of the other A schools as well, so I feel pretty confident that we'll, you know, be able to get our five or six games in, in a football season.
Okay. And now with the, with the spring sports coming up, will there be any overlap, are they going to end?
No, we're going to end, there's only really a one-week overlap right now from winter going into the Fall II season. The Fall II season will end May 1st, and when we start back up on the 3rd of May. So it's a pretty intense, six, seven days a week we're going to go, so there's no overlap for that season, and we really didn't want to affect the spring season, because they lost those student athletes, and those programs lost out a lot last spring, so we're really trying to avoid any conflict with the spring, and like I said, the spring will go from May 3rd all the way to almost the end of June.
And with football, with the amount of gear involved, you talked quickly about the amount of sanitizer you're going through and spray, just with basketball, you have what you need to stay.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident, we've been meeting and talking about that, one thing we'll do is, the very beginning, the kids will get assigned their equipment, and they start out with uppers, or just start out with the helmet, and they progress to the shoulder pads. In the beginning, we'll have the kids take all their equipment home, they can take it home and wipe it down, and then when wrestling is over, we're going to utilize the wrestling room, and in the wrestling room, I have a grid of 50 squares at least in there where kids can leave their helmets and shoulder pads, and on a nightly basis, they can be sprayed down with the, you know, the spray mister. So I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to handle that and do that pretty easily.
Great. Good to hear. When registration opened up?
We started signups this past Monday, the 22nd, so it's very strong, a lot of good signups, a lot of kids are excited, so I'm looking forward to it, it's very positive. Like I said, you know, it's great for the kids to get out moving, and like I said, we had senior night today, tonight, right now, that's going on, and parents are going to be happy and very grateful that we're able to give them an opportunity for their kids, especially the seniors, you know, their last opportunity to play basketball, whatever sport it may be, so it's been very positive.
And the testing protocols remain the same?
Yeah, it's been very positive. I didn't get any results today, but so far, so good, there's been no positive results, it's just been all negative tests, and it's just working out with Marissa, Molly, Linda, we're getting some principals to help out, so it's been pretty smoothly, you know, there's a few bumps, it's timing and, you know, rolling it out, but it's been pretty positive.
Good, excellent, good to hear. Any other questions, board members, for Mike? Nope, very good, thanks, Michael. And later on in the agenda, we have a resolution to move forward with the Fall II sports.
Couple of items I just wanted to add, when we were preparing the information for the board's review, I noted that the county authorization post from Steve McGlaughlin was missing volleyball, was not listed, so I contacted the county department of health, and it was an oversight, and their director, Mary Fran Wakunas, agreed to send me an email to confirm that volleyball was approved, it was just an oversight on the part of the county, and so I attached that as well, so we had that documentation as well.
Very good, I saw that, thank you, Jeff. Moving on to the next discussion item, we're going to talk about the school budget, preliminary tax cap calculation, and Jeff or Linda? I'm not sure.
I'm going to turn this over to Linda in just a second. One of the factors that will affect our proposed budget for next school year is the amount that we are allowed by New York State Formula to raise the tax levy. It is a complicated formula, the tax cap is commonly referred to as a 2% tax cap, but it is not a 2% tax cap, because every district has different factors within their budget, within their property growth, within their districts, and other aspects, including categories of the budget related to capital expenses and pilots. With that general explanation, we'll go with a more technical explanation from Linda Wager, our Director of Business and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Mr. Goodwin, could you pull up the document under 6B? Providing for the board tonight a preliminary tax cap calculation, as Mr. Simons said, this is a multi-step calculation that arrives at a percentage that we can increase our tax levy by. The bottom line is that, right now, we can increase our current-year tax levy by 1.28% for next year. And the way we come to that calculation is, we start with the prior-year tax levy, so this current-year tax levy is $58,374,546. The tax-based growth factor is a factor that is provided to us by the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance, it accounts for the changes in full value of taxable property within the school district. The factor is 1.34%. Then we add in the pilots that we are expecting this year, which is $4,872,373. The reason we add that back in, we will be adjusting for our pilots next year, we'll be subtracting those out. We also then have to subtract out our prior-year capital exclusion. The capital exclusion calculation comes from looking at our debt service, our capital expenditures and debt service, and it nets it against our aid, our building aid and transportation aid on our buses. So that amount that we need to subtract out is $3,409,999. The allowable levy growth factor, this is where the 2% comes in, because the allowable levy growth factor is the lesser of either 2% or the Consumer Price Index from the preceding calendar year, which in this case is 1.23%. Then we add in our pilots that we're expecting next year. Our pilots that we're expecting next year has significantly increased to $6,640,755. And that increase, there's a normal increase in the pilots, however, there is one pilot with Regeneron on Temple Avenue that significantly increases from a payment of $427,000 that we're expecting this year to over $1.9 million next year. So we have to subtract that out, because we can't levy taxes on that since we're receiving it in pilot revenue. And then we add in our capital levy exclusion for this year, and again, that is the expenses for our capital and our debt service expenses, the amount that exceeds the aid that's associated with it. And that comes down to a taxable levy limit, including our exclusions of $59,126,575, which equates to 1.28% over the last year. So that in dollars is, we can increase the levy by $752,029 for next year. So as I said, this is preliminary, this may change based on, I am reviewing with Rensselaer County, the pilots again, especially since there's such a significant increase, and, you know, we'll also have to look at our levy exclusion, our capital exclusion, and we may need to adjust some debt service there as well. Are there any questions on this?
Comments or questions for Linda? If you look at page 2, you can see the components, the tax cap fee shows some of the history, and where we were 17, 18 to today, and you can see how it's typically been in the 4% range for higher, and then dropped quite a bit 2021, and now even lower in this year. So shows the increase in the pilots and things like that that are happening for the district, and just that margin is very small for us as we plan for the budget for next year.
It is.
All right. Now that everyone's back on the screen, board members, any questions, comments? No, good, all right. And later on in the agenda, we have a resolution to approve the preliminary tax cap?
Yes.
It has to be submitted, Linda, is that what it is?
It has been submitted already, yeah. It was due this week.
Okay. All right. Next thing, item on the discussion is the Statement of Continued Eligibility Agreement, which is around certification.
That will be Ms. Cannon, our Director of Human Resources.
Very good.
Thank you. So the Statement of Continued Eligibility affects certain special education teachers who teach a special class in grades 7 through 12. The State Department of Education is going to be changing those certification requirements effective July 1 of 2021. Right now, there are approximately 11 special education teachers at our secondary level that will be affected by this certification change. The teachers now need to be either certified in the subject areas that they teach, in math, social studies, English, or science, or meet certain experience requirements for the Statement of Continued Eligibility. As of today, myself and the Director of People Personnel Services have met with all of the teachers affected and their union leadership, and we've discussed exactly what they need in terms of requirements to fulfill the Statement of Eligibility application process. We would like to enter into an agreement with the EGTA to help with the financial aspects in terms of the cost of the application of our special education teachers, the workshops such as DASA, SAVE, Child Abuse and Autism, and also the fingerprinting component if it's needed, and the SOCE, this will help us ensure that these teachers can be retained to teach the classes that they're currently teaching. Any questions?
Any questions from Marissa? I'm pretty familiar with the process, so, it's happening across the district, and just in our colleagues, the same way in districts, you know, in my role at Questar and across the BOCs, a lot of school districts have chosen to support the teachers with some form of reimbursement for those costs, because it really was something that the state had put on them to get that certification, and we have a lot of longstanding teachers who may have been here before, fingerprinting came online, things like that, and they did waive the fee for any multiple certifications that have to be applied for just a one time, so I, you know, it's the right thing to do for our staff, and it's about 10 teachers, you said?
Yeah, it's about approximately 11 teachers.
11 teachers, okay. Any questions, Molly, anything to add? Good, okay.
I think you guys covered it very well.
All right. It's good to be in the HR business, know about that stuff. All right. If there's no other comments, discussion, I'll go to individual board members for our board forum, I'll start in person, I'll start with Frank, since he's closest to me, anything? Good. And Kathleen, good to see you in person. All right. And on the screen, I'll start with, looks like at the top, Joanne Taylor. Good, all right. And John Dunn, good. Michelle Skamerski, good. Jennifer Massey, good, all right. I think that's it, right? To the, yep, and Mr. Mann is in, no, Deanna, is Deanna here? Oh, I'm sorry, you're in the dark, I couldn't see you there, I didn't know who that was. Deanna, you're good? Okay, sorry about that, I didn't, I didn't see you. All right, we're good. Okay, we'll move on to the committee reports, and Marissa, you're on again.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. I just want to talk briefly about the recruitment process for the two temporary teaching assistants that we are going to be hiring in order to support the return of our kindergarten students. The positions were posted in early February, they were posted for two weeks, the posting close date was February 16th, and we had eight candidates apply. Upon review of the candidate credentials, we had selected seven to interview. We had an interview committee that consisted of our principal, Mr. Mahar at Belltop, two of our kindergarten teachers, and one of the teaching assistants in the kindergarten classroom, as well as myself. We conducted the interviews via Google meets on February 17th. Each candidate was given about 30 minutes to answer eight questions, and the committee is going to be recommending two candidates for hire effective Monday, February 22nd. Each of those candidates holds the appropriate New York State certification.
Good. So I made your faux pas on my part, I think I missed the K-5 update.
That's okay, we can come back to that, if anybody has any questions.
Apologize for that.
I thought that was intentional.
It wasn't, I was like, I didn't have my glasses on, I think I missed that.
We got more people on the stream before I talked about it, so I thought it was strategic.
Well, thank you for giving me that much credit for being strategic, I appreciate it.
Are there any questions about the hiring of the teaching assistants?
Well, what we'll do, if the board is okay, do you want to continue with committee reports, and then we'll go back to that item, so I apologize for skipping over that. Linda, we'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. We had two BRAC meetings so far, on Monday, January 25th, and then again on Monday, February 22nd. On Monday, January 25th, we asked Mr. Bickel, our Facilities Director, and Mr. Lynn Ellsworth from Santa Ruben, our Construction Manager, to review for the committee the work that has been done so far in Phase 1 and 2 of our current capital project. Just basically, on Phase 1, we had control access system, security camera, PA system, and telephone system. And then in Phase 2, Mr. Bickel reviewed work that was done at Green Meadow, Red Mill, Goff, and the Transportation Center. He then went into work that we are expecting to complete in the summer of 2021 for Phase 2, and then Mr. Ellsworth reviewed the work that we expect to do in Phase 3 of summer 2021. In Phase 2, work this summer will be done at Green Meadow, Red Mill, and Goff, and next summer, work will be done at Belltop and DPS, Janay, and some work at the high school. And then Mr. Simons turned the meeting over to Mr. Leonard, who reviewed for us the new athletic field, which is expected to be completed in the summer of 2022. And we also reviewed the building condition survey, which is a requirement for us next year in 2122. And Mr. Crowley is from March Associates, he explained that the building condition survey was developed by SED, it looks at the brick and mortar, the site work, pavement, structure, drainage, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical systems, and then they put together a five-year cost estimate for those items that come up, and that's how we determine our future capital projects. Then on February 22nd, I don't have minutes attached here, but I did want to inform you that we had several guests at our BRAC committee meeting. Filomena Prinzo is a Realtor from Howard Hannah, Christina Hennessy is a Realtor from Keller William Realty, and Joshua Tossi is a planner from Capital District Regional Planning Commission, and the Realtors provided for us just some information as to the trends in the district, why people find this district appealing, and how people are looking to continually move, more young families are moving into the district. Josh Tossi from CDRPC, he reviewed the enrollment projection report, which I won't go into, because we're reviewing that a little bit later in detail.
Very good.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Linda. Any questions for Linda from the board members? No? Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Jim?
No committee.
No reports? Very good, thanks, Jim. Do you want to roll into, back to the K-5? Very good, okay, I'm excited to hear about the report and changes, I mean, there's been a lot of progress made, and very pleased to listen to this report from the superintendent, so, Jeff?
So as the board is aware, and the community is aware, we have been, as a district, studying some changes that we could make to increase the number of days of in-person instruction. Number of days of in-person instruction, starting with our youngest children at the K5 level. At our prior board meeting, we announced that we are able to accommodate. All of our kindergarten students who want to come for in-person instruction five days a week. And we are all set to go with a March 1st. Start date. We held a meeting last evening virtually with any kindergarten parents that were interested. We were joined by each of the five elementary principals, Mr. McHugh as our Assistant Superintendent for Quick悟Instruction. And three of our kindergarten teachers from Janay. To answer any questions and to talk about the overall. Transition and the model. I think the parents are very excited. So we indicated last evening with our kindergarten parents that we would hope, we were hoping to do this earlier. The COVID-19 infection rate started increasing in October. And lasted until really the end of January. Now that infection rate is down to one and a half percent on a seven-day rolling average in Rensselaer County. Albany County is also down under two. So the region is experiencing. Good news regarding COVID-19. And community spread. So over the course of the last couple of weeks. Our administrative team. Has had discussions with our principals. We have had. Discussions with the teachers' union. We have talked with. Other districts about what they're seeing. And we made a determination based on some parent feedback. We surveyed the parents about the possibility of eliminating virtual Wednesdays. Starting at the. First grade through fifth grade level because the kindergartners will now be coming in every day anyways. And overwhelmingly. The parents saw that as a favorable change and overwhelmingly did not see it as a problem. In terms of changing their childcare arrangements. It was 85%. Of our families surveyed said that this would be an important improvement for their children. So. We shared that information with the administrative team. We shared that information with the teachers' union. We discussed some of the impact of that change. On classroom instruction. And we are very, very pleased tonight to announce that effective March 10th. Which is two weeks from this evening. That will be our first day, should the board support this, of bringing in. One cohort of our first graders through fifth graders. On one Wednesday and then the following Wednesday, the other cohort would come into the building. So it's an additional day of in-person instruction. Every other week for our first graders through fifth graders. And it is an additional day of remote instruction. On the alternate week. We have a communication ready to go to our families. Tomorrow, we have informed all of our staff that we were recommending this change this evening. We feel really good about it. And we want to continue to look for ways this year. To see what else can be done to increase in-person learning, but we want to get these two changes implemented first. As we continue to study what might be done at other grade levels. The transportation arrangements will not be significantly impacted by this. Mr. Noah is confident that the number of students on a bus. Will still be within appropriate parameters for social distancing. The, I've been in communication with Kim Bourbon, who operates the Green Bush Child Care. Caring Program and this change will facilitate fewer families. Needing the full day program on Wednesdays because remember now it's half the kids that aren't in school. So there will be a shift of the GCC program that currently operating in Janay. Any of those families that still need it will go to St. Mary's and we're working with GCC to adjust. Whatever they need to transition that successfully. So. This is a really good hopeful sign. That we might be able to do more of this as we continue to progress. Through the rest of the year and we are working on. Exploring every option possible. For the fall. As we advocate for changes that may permit. Our district to offer in-person learning for every child kindergarten through 12th grade. There are a lot of discussions occurring about this. Among our parents. Among our elected officials, among superintendents. Today I was in a thread of an email because I'm on the State Superintendent's Group Legislative Committee where. I advocated. For the New York State Department of Health guidelines to be adjusted to accommodate. The fact that we now have a vaccine. More people will be vaccinated by the time we get to the summer. Approximately, we have about 60%, we believe of our teachers. Who have had two doses of the vaccine based on some of the data that we are collecting. It's simply an issue of space right now. If we could get some flexibility regarding the space. And possibly. Other provisions that might work to be able to ensure the health and safety. Of the children. I'd like to see all the kids coming back in September. I can't guarantee that. I can't promise that. The regulations are created by the state. Sometimes New York State has guidance documents and regulations that are more. Restrictive than the CDC guidelines. But we are working on this every day. And we hope that this will, this time period between now and the spring will yield a lot of. Discussions about where we're going to go in September. But we are also looking at things that we might be able to do for the next four months. Including some, bringing some additional kids in who need more support. Today we talked about the NL, the NL students, for example, at Janay coming in four days a week. We're looking at other grade levels to see how the enrollment might affect our ability to bring more children in. We've had conversations with our administrators this morning about thinking about. Space utilization both for now and next year, and we're working on this. But we do need some help from the state in terms of those guidelines. But we're very pleased about the virtual Wednesday change. It's moving us in the right direction. We hope the board will support it. Yep.
Excellent news. I'm very supportive of the direction and want to thank. Everyone who worked very diligently and our parents for their patience as we move forward with the kindergarten. And then the virtual Wednesday. So any questions for, for, for Mr. Simons from the board? About Kathleen? She's getting the microphone.
Mr. Simons, you mentioned that 60% of our. Teachers have gotten the vaccine so far. Do we know about staff because? We can't run the school without the staff.
We have the survey ready to go. A little bit of background that maybe the public isn't aware of. On Friday of last week. This past Friday, Governor announced in one of his press briefings, it was late in the afternoon. That schools are going to be required to collect vaccination data. On a number of teachers who, teachers specifically who had been vaccinated. And have it in by today. We got the official executive order yesterday. We did a Google form. We sent it out to our teachers. Marissa and Mark Adam worked on it. And, but we have other forms ready to go for the other staff. We had it ready to report today. We got a great response rate from our teachers. It's where I cited the 60% number. But then at six o'clock, the. The guidance we had received was that the state portal that we use. To report our COVID data every day, the questions were going to be modified in the fields to report the vaccination data. We checked it multiple times today. Superintendents and Questar met today. And there were no changes. So we didn't have a mechanism to report it. Then at six o'clock this evening. We got an email from the Department of Health that although it is mandated by the executive order, we don't have to do it today. So I think they're still working on it. But. Short answer to your question is, we do plan to survey. All of our staff regarding vaccinations and we were very encouraged by the number of people who've already. They've either got to their two shots. They've gotten one shot or they've got an appointment. And there was a very, very small number of folks that. I think we're simply waiting to see when. The line got a little shorter. Yep. But we are going to have that data.
Great question. Anyone else? Board members? Michelle?
So Jeff, thank you so much for putting all the effort into really responding to what our parents need. And want, I really truly appreciate your effort, all of the, all the faculty and all the supporting staff. The question that. I think, well, maybe the area that surprises me the most is there has been a lot of controversy of how successful they felt the remote days were. So did you get a sense from the survey that our parents felt that the remote days? Provided more value than the virtual days? And I'm, I'm just wondering if it's different for the elementary school versus what we think we might see in middle school or the high school?
We didn't specifically ask about the remote days. We asked, we didn't, so we didn't ask that question. So we didn't get the data back. We asked. We gave them in the survey narrative. A sample of how the schedule would change on A, B days with every other week. Being an additional day. We asked them whether or not they felt the change, to what degree did they feel the change? To virtual Wednesday. Would provide a favorable change for their child's instruction. And that's where the 85% came in. We asked. Whether they agreed or disagreed on a scale with. Whether or not the change. Would be disruptive to their current. Schedule, work schedules or arrangements. And again, there was a high percentage of strongly disagree with that. So that it, and that it was not disruptive. We asked them about. Whether or not their childcare arrangement would need to be changed. High percentage said no. So it was really about the, the survey was really about the impact of the change on their. Their current arrangements and whether or not they saw the change as favorable. And in all of the different. Four or five questions that we asked. It was highly favorable. And so. We feel in doing this that our committee would be positively impacted. Not negatively impacted and they're appreciative of the additional. Day every other week. One thing I forgot to talk about is. How we're going to start this on March 10th. It may become a little confusing. In my discussions with the principals, we talked about the fact that East Green Bush School District at the elementary level has historically had. A special schedule, art, music, physical education, A week, B week. Okay. So. Principals can explain this better than I can, but it is a methodology of scheduling that ensures that kids can get. More PE. On an every other week basis and get the number of specials courses in. We're going to start March 10th with an additional day for the B group. Just to be consistent, it's B week, it's B group. That is not to suggest that we are not aware of the fact. That based on holidays and snow days. Our A group right now is about two and a half days. Behind in terms of in-person instruction compared to the B group. So we don't want anybody to interpret that decision as being. Moving the Bs ahead of the As or the As are behind. It's really just, just to avoid confusion. The lunch menus are set up as A and B week, the special schedules. We do have a plan that Mr. McHugh is. Working on that. Once the weather again around here, it could be May 1st. But once the weather settles down and we have better predictability. That we're not going to have to cancel school in person. Because of snow, sleet, rain or ice. We will work with our teachers' union and our principals on the best way to make a few changes. In the schedules that so that hopefully by the end of the year. A group and B group in terms of in-person learning will be even. That's our goal. We can't promise that either. Simply because we don't control the weather, but that is our intent.
Very good.
But the survey was really based on, is this going to be a good benefit for your child? And is it going to cause any hardships for your family's current? Childcare or work schedule and overwhelmingly it doesn't seem to.
Very good. That was one of the concerns.
Another in-school, you know, instruction day, which is a big bonus for them. Versus what we have right now. So that makes sense.
Yep.
And we've got some other discussions we haven't had yet. Or just started today. So we need a little time to get these two changes in place and then we'll, we're going to see what else we can do.
And then I guess the last question I had is how are the teachers adjusting their, their, their scheduling for, for teaching? Based on that, are they gonna need, are they picking up additional? I guess work, you know, because they're splitting their, their, their components?
In, in talking, that's a great question. In, in talking with. The teachers' union. One of the concerns expressed to us was. I think, I think overwhelmingly, teachers are happy that the kids are coming in. For in-person instruction, but one of the concerns was. Because the teachers are really teaching in three different modalities, so to speak. Remote learning, synchronous assignments. Virtual instruction, live and in-person. Even though that virtual instruction piece is going away. There was time dedicated because of the change in the schedule on virtual Wednesdays. For, that the teachers really dedicated to either planning together. Or working individually to do the, do whatever they could to have those remote assignments be. The best that they could be. So there was a concern that they were losing that time. We discussed that with our principals. We discussed that with the union. And the district has a plan. And while it doesn't provide the same level of time to work on those remote projects. Once a month, similar to what we do with reading assessments. We have a calendar of subs planned so that in March, April, May and maybe June. The teachers and the principals in each building will know that's your day that you have some dedicated subs. They've been arranged ahead of time. And if teachers want to use that time. To enhance the planning that they need to have in place, they can do that. So. That is a change of instruction. And to offset the impact of that change, we agreed to provide what we could.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Michelle. Any other questions, board members? Excellent. Just again, want to thank the team and looking forward to. Have those opportunities for our, our younger learners to, to get more in-person days. So thank you very much.
One thing that's nice about the two changes that we're making is no child will have to be reassigned, reassigned to a different teacher. And no teacher will have to be reassigned to a different grade level. There are some, I will mention, there are some buildings. In which the class sizes are close. To. The amount of space that we have to accommodate. So anyone who is interested in coming. Having their child move off the full remote program into our classes now. Should contact the building principal. To see what arrangements can be made. We have had a practice in the district when enrollment caps have been met. But there is space in other buildings. To try to facilitate. Having those, in those situations, if the child, family really wants the child to come back, they may have to for the rest of the year. Come to a different school other than their neighborhood school. It's a small number of situations right now that we're aware of. Like it's second grade at Red Mill. Overall, our district's second grade is very high. And fifth grade at Green Meadow. And the principals are aware of this. We've been talking about it. We're going to do the best to try to accommodate them, but there may be a situation. That we can't resolve for the child to go to their home school. So they might have to go to a school other than their home school. We've done that in the past and as we found is. Particularly with kindergarten, we find that the kids and the families like the school so much, they don't want to go back to the one that they were, they were assigned to. So. Cause they're all great.
Exactly.
They're all great.
Excellent. Good question. So again, writing our parents that if that is a circumstance that you're involved with, we're going to contact the building principals. And start that process. So excellent. Very good. All right. Any other comments? Jim, you have any comments? Good. Thank you. Did you have any committee reports, Mr. Simons at all?
Only one announcement regarding a committee. Mrs. Curt and I had a conversation this afternoon. Mrs. Curt has been serving, involved in the New York State School Boards Association advocacy work. We talked about some important issues and themes. We're going to have our next advocacy meeting of the district on Monday at 3:30, which is March 1st already. And based on my discussion, Mrs. Curt, I'm inviting some folks from Questar to come, because one of the things we want to talk about is all the efforts that we're making to have not only college-bound students, but kids that are pursuing current technical education and maybe wanting to go into those types of fields. We're going to try to recruit some students to get involved in our advocacy committee.
Great. Excellent.
I thought that was an excellent idea. We also want to talk about how we might advocate at both the federal and the state level. Mrs. Curt, I don't know if you want to add anything now that...
Actually, for the other school board members, NISBA has a couple of kind of form letters that we can send out to our local officials, talking about not only the state budget, but also advocacy on the federal end. And one of the things that they point out is how much of our state budget is, or our money for the schools is based on federal money right now, and that could cause a problem further down the road. So it's really encouraging our federal officials to not just look now, but to look down the road, that this is going to be an ongoing problem. So there are a couple of letters, like I said, that you can just kind of put your name on, or you can, you know, tailor it to whatever it is that you want to say.
Very good. Okay. And those are on the NISBA website?
Yeah, under the advocacy.
Advocacy?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. I've sent mine in.
So I'd encourage board members to go check that link out and send them in. The other thing, just to mention for parents, and you know, that even though the Department of Health is the one that's driving a lot of the guidelines, it is important, you know, as we look at the CDC, the Department of Health, and what's being recommended for space utilization, things like that, and making changes, still don't be afraid to reach out to your local legislators and let them know and let your voice be heard about letting our kids go back to school. We can do it if we can get some relief, I think, in some of those restrictions. Not to jeopardize safety, that's not my point. The point is really that we've proven that we can do things from a physical plant, I guess, view. We need to have some relief in terms of making sure that we can have the space, like a district like this needs that additional space, or else we're going to have a hard time with this process. So that is always helpful when parents reach out directly. And maybe we can have an advocacy event down the road that does a lot of these things that we're talking about this evening. Moving on to the agenda, we have the minutes for February 10th. All board members were present. Any comments, questions, or revisions on the minutes? I don't see any, so I need a motion to approve the minutes. Frank, second, Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. Moving on to regular business, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? I see Joanne's hand. And Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Moving on, we talked about the fall to higher-risk sports. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? Kathleen, second, Deanna, all those in favor? Great, approve. There you go, Michael. And secondly, we have the approval of normal contact wrestling. Do you want to talk about this a little bit, Mr. Leonard or Mr. Simons?
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Leonard and Mr. McHugh to talk a little bit about this. The board approved non-contact practices for wrestling. At the last board meeting, we started the registration process for wrestling, and we've learned from the experience of some districts that had already started contact practices, as well as are preparing for competition. So Mr. Leonard feels that the confidence level regarding allowing wrestlers to complete on a limited schedule is there, based on their experiences. And I'll let Mr. Leonard talk about what's in place should the board approve going forward with this. Mr. Leonard?
Good evening. Yes, I'm very confident, just watching the wrestling team the last three days, very socially distant, all the kids wore their masks. I could tell you that the coaches are taking the sanitation and cleaning of the wrestling room very serious. They continue to clean it multiple times throughout the day and throughout practice. Watching the other schools, like Mr. Simon says, they've already started some wrestling matches, has been very successful. Usually, it's just a dual match against one other school. That's all we have left, because we need our 10 required practices, and we're only looking at two matches, one away, one home, which serves as our senior night. But I'm very confident, so far, so good. We had multiple excellent first few days of wrestling. Kids understand, the kids listen. So, so far, so good. I'm very confident we'll continue with all of our safety procedures, wearing masks and cleaning and sanitizing. I can tell you after practice, my office is across the hallway from the wrestling room, and my office smells like cleaning and disinfecting all the time with the amount of cleaning solution they're using. So it's definitely getting cleaned to a high level. But I just think it's another great opportunity for our kids, especially our wrestling program to finish out, especially among, we probably have about six or seven seniors, and it'll give them an opportunity to finish out their career with a couple of matches for their season.
Very good. Any questions for Mike? Jimmy, do you want to say anything at all? Okay, covered it all? Seeing no questions, I need a motion to approve the normal contact wrestling approval. John, second, Kathleen, all those in favor? All those opposed? Seeing none? Approved, very good. Good luck with the team, and I'm really pleased to be able to have this opportunity, and the board supports it 100%.
Great, thank you so much. I just want to really quickly just say something real quick about our boys and girls bowling team. They just ended the winter season both undefeated and both won the suburban council championship. So congratulations to our boys and girls bowling team, and our girls cheerleading came in second this past weekend at a competition. Obviously, it was a video virtual, so congratulations to all those, but thank you so much for your support.
I just wanted to say we really appreciate the board's support for the athletic program and all of the extracurricular programs, and moving forward on both the winter and the fall too, including wrestling, we really do appreciate that. And I will say that in the superintendent's meetings that we've had, including one today, that was scheduled to be with the county health department, but they couldn't come, we have talked about how impressed we are with our coaches and our student athletes about how well they're doing with this. And it's a credit to the athletic directors, including Mr. Leonard, the coaches, the students, that this is going as well as it possibly could be imagined. One thing I will say also is the live streaming that we're offering has been very much appreciated by the community. It is of high quality in our district, and it is a private company doing it, but Ryan Jones is, I think, operating the camera. But it's all set up in a way that, I will share this, and hopefully nobody from Niskiuna is watching, I was sitting on my couch, watching girls' basketball through Sportscope, the scoreboard in the corner, and eating some chips, I shouldn't admit that, on a Saturday. And I got a text from, I sent a picture of it to Mr. McHugh, and I said, hey, Jim, check this out, this is really of high quality. And then within a few minutes, he sent me a, it was either an Instagram or a Facebook post, from somebody from Niskiuna who said, why can't you just call over to Columbia and find out what they're doing? It's like sitting here and watching ESPN. So it was nice to get that kind of feedback, although it was kind of backhanded. But really good job, really good job with the winter program, Mike.
Thank you. Yeah, I've actually gotten about six other companies outside of school districts that are looking to use Sportscope.
Oh, that's great, great. And then I think the senior recognition for the student athletes, and one of the things we talked about earlier at the student council meeting was really not just the opportunities for our student athletes, but also continue to open up other activities and clubs and the arts, and trying to be able to do things, performances, hopefully down the road as things allow.
We've started to talk about that among districts and within our own team, for example, drama. Science Olympiad at the middle school has submitted a proposal to do some in-person practices for their tournaments. I'd like to approve that. And moving forward, we're going to take the state document from the Department of Health and make sure that, similar to what we're doing with the coaches, the club advisors have that document, and they can send us a plan of how they plan to address those areas and protocols as a way just to make sure that we're applying the same standards.
Yep, excellent. Good progress.
Mike?
Yes?
Hi, can I just say something? I just wanted to thank Superintendent Simons for putting out the information through our connection down at the Troy Music Hall. John Elbom shared with me on a networking event that I was participating with him about an event that is free. It's called the Black Violin, and it's a virtual student matinee that is open to teachers to register, and it's presented in partnership with the Troy Music Hall, the Proctors Collaborative, and the Saratoga Performing Arts Center for the teachers to register for the concert. And again, it is free. It's a combination of what they are describing as classic boom, and to overcome stereotypes and encourage people of all ages, races, and economic backgrounds to join together to break down those cultural barriers. And so it's kind of exciting. It is recommended for grades K through 12, and so I'm hoping that our music teachers and programs will participate in this event, and that they can stream at any time between February 22nd and April 2nd. So again, thank you, Mr. Simons, for doing that, because again, the arts are pretty, and it's a way to be able to bring people together, and also for our students to participate in something pretty special and pretty spectacular. They just released a new album, the two gentlemen, at... So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Massey, for bringing it to our attention. It was sent to the administrators and the, Mr. Holiday, the chair of our music department, and was asked to send it to all of the teachers. So hopefully we will participate, and it's a great opportunity. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, Jennifer. Moving on to our agenda, we have the reports and presentations of the superintendent, school enrollment projections.
Just very brief overview, Mrs. Wager mentioned that the Budget Review and Advisory Committee received the annual enrollment projection update, which has been prepared by the Capital Region Planning Commission, and Capital District Regional Planning Commission. And it is something that the board has done for a number of years now, which gives us information on an annual basis regarding trends in enrollment of children at the K-5, the 6, 8, and the 9, 12 level, historical trends to date, as well as projections out five and 10 years in terms of what we might anticipate. There's a common methodology utilized for these types of report. It's called cohort survival method, which basically takes a look at the number of children that are born within the East Green Bush School District, and projects out using a formula, how many kindergartners would we expect five years from that birth cohort? The numbers are updated every year. The report was provided by Josh Tosi.
Tosi.
Tosi. And it was very well received. In years past, the most recent years, we have seen a stable enrollment after a multiple-year period of decline. And over the last couple of years, we reported that the elementary enrollment was increasing slightly, and the middle school and the high school was fairly stable and maybe declining a little bit as we look at years out. As the report indicates, there is a slight decline this year at all levels. And in discussions with Josh, this could be an anomaly related to COVID, but it is, the numbers are the numbers. We have done some own internal reviews of some factors that may have contributed to that decline this year. For example, we know of some kindergarten parents who chose to have their children wait another year before they start kindergarten. We've had, across the region, and Questar has collected this information, we've had a spike in the number of families who are able to choose homeschooling as an option. And we are aware that in some of our private schools, they had the space and perhaps did not have to follow as many guidance regulations as the public schools. And so we believe that some of this is related to COVID. We believe that many students will be coming back next year, hopefully. And we expect to see either a stabilization or maybe even a modest increase moving forward. There is a big jump in the kindergarten cohort for next year. We're expecting, I think, approximately 355 students in our kindergarten class next year. Our budget will reflect that in terms of what we are projecting for sections. The information in this study complements some of the information that we received from the realtors as well at the BRAC committee, where we see a very competitive housing market in East Green Bush, where houses are not, there is not a large inventory of existing homes for sale, because people are moving in, buying them up, and that is increasing the average price of existing home, existing single-family home sales. We were told by the realtors that as many as 10 individuals are making offers on homes and, in some cases, paying cash. So it is a very much seller's market, as described, and our district remains a very attractive district for people to move into and to start raising a family. So that's a summary. The report was provided electronically to the board a few days ago. If the board would like a printed copy, we have those available. We can send them out to you. The enrollment projection is important not only for the planning of our budget, it's also important for the planning of facilities as we look to renovate our classrooms in future years. Right now, we have capacity in our school district to accommodate more kids. We would not be looking necessarily at additions to our buildings, but we would be looking at making sure that the existing classrooms are modernized and that the systems are replaced on schedule. So it's a very informative document. It's done, really well done by the Capital District Regional Planning Commission, and it will be on our website for anybody on the public who wants to read it or may have questions at future board meetings. But we're really thankful that they do this type of work for us, because it really helps with our long-range planning.
Very good. Lyd, any comments?
I would just like to say, just to make the relativity of the increased K enrollment that we're expecting for next year, typically, the enrollment for kindergarten ranges between like 280 to about 300. So it's significantly higher for next year.
Yep. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Simons, board members? I think at this time, maybe, you know, we're just getting the report. I was able to attend the BRAC meeting on Monday. I want to thank Mr. Pratt and Linda for their leadership in that meeting and the committee involvement. And the projections are really, really valuable. I know that this was kind of an anomaly, like you said, they've usually been spot on within a few students, and for planning purposes, it's been extremely helpful. And I think that it takes some time to digest it, we can even bring it back as a discussion item for next meeting as we get into the budget process, if there's any questions on the enrollment projections, because it has a significant impact on what we're going to be doing for next year.
It's a great idea.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the next item, table motions. I have none at this time. And I want to welcome Mark Mann, join the meeting. Mark, you got that, Jeannie? You got that, Jeannie? Um. Old business board members, anything? Need to bring up? I don't have anything. Good. All right. Moving on to item 13, the consent agenda. There's a lot of items on the consent agenda tonight. Uh, is there anything we should highlight, Mr. Simons, before we ask the board?
Several of the items were included also as discussion items, so the board would have more information on them. The, a couple of things I will. Just kind of briefly touch on the, every year, the New York State comptroller, uh, rates school districts regarding their fiscal stability. Our district continues to not be in fiscal stress. That means that we are, have done a good job with. Uh, long range planning. Uh, it does not mean we have a lot of revenue. Uh, coming in for next year. So we just want to clarify that. It just means that we handle the revenue we have. Very, very well.
Personal stress, yes. Fiscal stress. State says we're zero.
Other new item is Dr. James Wilson is a, a local physician who has agreed to contract with the district for. Uh, physician services. We were informed just a few days ago really that. Our current provider, Seaton Health, was no longer able to do it. Uh, so we worked with our attorneys on a contract for Dr. Wilson to provide those, uh, required physicals. In accordance with the Department of Transportation and, um. The state. The tax cap we've already talked about and I'm thankful to, uh, Dr. Albert. Tammy Cosgrove and Molly McGrath for updating our emergency first aid protocols. Which complement the district's safety plans and are required to make sure that we are. We are current and that those are accessible and available to our staff in the event of an emergency. The other item is the calendar. Um, I just highlight. One significant change in the proposed calendar. Um, the state has determined that there is a new, uh, New York State holiday, Juneteenth. That day needed to be added as a day for a holiday within the schedule. We have 182 day. All right, Marissa, 182 day, uh, calendar for employees. Uh, it's really 187 when you build in the five snow days. So there isn't a lot of room to add a holiday. Uh, and we also observe the, one of the Jewish holidays in September. So with discussions of the calendar committee. We determined that the last day of school, which is a Friday. For students that following that in June on the Monday. Staff would return for superintendent's day and that fulfills the 180, 182. Employee work day. Did I get it correct, Marissa?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Take, just took a couple of years of practice. Uh, so the committee did a good job on it. Um, the only other option would have been not very popular. About as popular as remote snow days. Uh, it would have been, uh, working the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And I don't think anybody wanted to even hear that. So. It was a good solution and I thank the calendar committee for it.
Thank you for the updates on those. Is there any questions, board members, on the consent agenda items? No. Is Mary Rizzi out? Linda?
Yes, she is.
Any comments, Mary, about the internal audit report? She's out there?
I don't, no, I don't have any comments at this time. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Well, thanks for doing the work on that. Appreciate it. All right. Seeing no additional comments or questions, um, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Kathleen, second, Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. Any opposed? I haven't seen any opposed. All right. Or approved. Thank you. Lot of items there, a lot of good, good information and, um, planning for, for the next year. Moving on to new business, we have the tax litigation with North Green Bush Associates, which is the property, uh, Home Depot was on. Comments? Linda? We're putting you on the spot.
That's okay. I was trying to find my paperwork. So our, um, attorneys, um. Are suggesting a settlement to us. Uh, they, Home Depot property, which is North Green Bush Associates. Uh, filed. A litigation. Case with us for the 2020 tax year, this current tax year, which would have resulted. Um, in a $63,918 refund for this year and going into the future years. Um, under this settlement, Home Depot has agreed to, um. Re, uh, has agreed to avoid this litigation for this year and, um. Has, um, I'm sorry, has proposed. Moving forward with their assessment from 1.69 million down to 1.6, 1.6 million going forward. That will. That will result in approximately $9800 less in taxes next year. So much less than we expected.
Any questions for Linda on the, yeah, any, anything on that? So it's, it's, it's pretty interesting. I mean, North Green was Associates is an agro company and they leased the property, I think, to Home Depot, I believe that is. Which is a 30 some billion dollar company, but. I guess philosophically they have the right to do that. So, um. You know, for $900 bucks. So. And I'm a Home Depot shopper. Love Home Depot. Okay. Uh, any questions on that? I need a motion to approve the, uh, the resolution? Hands. Mark, second, Michelle, all those in favor? All those opposed? None? Approved. Now moving to the public forum, number two. Linda, do we have any comments, emails?
Yes. Yes, we do.
All right.
Uh, we have an email from Kristen Sikora. She is the parent of, of a student at Janay and Goff. She is concerned that the survey that went out was, um, phrased a little too vaguely. Uh, in order to get a real picture of what parent concerns might be if students were to go back every other Wednesday. Uh, she's concerned about losing the remote instruction day. And she now has another day every other week that she has to supplement her children's learning due to. Um, the busy work that they tend to be given on those days. And she mentions that her children are done with their work on those days in two hours. And the benefit of additional in-person days. May be negated by the addition of the remote day every other Wednesday.
Uh, we would encourage her to call the principal of her child, both principals of her children's respective schools to talk about the remote work. Um, and if you forward me that email, we'll talk to the principals tomorrow and have them get in contact with her. But overall, overall, the parents favored the change.
There are no other comments.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that comment. And I think, yes, encourage the parents, uh, to reach out to their principal for any, any questions on that or concerns. Moving to the second board forum, I'll start with our virtual folks. Uh, Deanna? Good. Joanne? Good. John? Done? Michelle Skemersky? Comments? Nope. Jennifer Massey? Good. Mr. Mann? Good. Kathleen? She's good. And Frank? Good. All right. Just want to, uh, congratulate our retirees who are on our instructional. And instructional support. Uh, wish them the best. And if they want to come back and substitute, they're always welcome to do that, right? So just a little plug there. Jeff, you have anything?
Uh, nothing further.
Okay. Uh, we do have need for an executive session for purposes of personnel. Um, items. We will do as we have in the past. Peter will send a link to the board members. Um, with that, I need a motion to go into executive session. We don't anticipate any business afterwards. Frank, second? Anybody? Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. So we will move this, uh, executive session. We don't anticipate any, uh, business after executive session. And then, uh, board members just, um, look for that link from Peter. Right? So have a great night, everybody. And I'll see you in a couple of weeks.